All right, I'll call this July 21st, 2022, Sammamish Planning Commission Meeting to Order. And we are, as a reminder, doing our meetings in a kind of a hybrid mode, so there are several of us here in City Hall and a couple on the screen as well. So I'll start with calling role, and I'll call the folks on screen first here. Commissioner Jerry O'Connell. Jerry Norman, sorry.
I'm here.
TC Labby.
Hello, hello, I am here.
So I'm gonna go from my left. Commissioner Motto.
Here.
Mark Baughman, I'm obviously here. Carrie Bosworth.
Present.
And Mike Presco.
Presco's here.
Thought you were gonna talk, sorry. All right, thanks, everybody. Oh, I should mention that Roisin O'Farrell has joined the City Council, and so now we have yet another opening on the Planning Commission to fill, so anybody out there that's interested, you should be able to go apply on the city's website. Okay, we need to read the meeting accessibility statement.
All right, the public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801 228th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest public health guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comments, five minutes if representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To give public comment via Zoom, join our webinar at the link https://us06web.zoom.us/j/82822648794. To give public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: US+1-253-215-8782, webinar ID 82822648794.
Thanks. Next is approval of this evening's agenda. I do wanna just remind everybody that there was a revised agenda with an item added. So is there any comments about this evening's agenda? Okay, we'll call the agenda approved for this evening by common consent. Next is approval of the minutes from our June 16th meeting. If you've had a chance to take a look at those meeting notes, are there any corrections or comments from that meeting? I don't see any, so we'll call those meeting minutes approved by common consent. Next, public comment for non-agenda items. This evening, we're gonna be talking about the kinda starting the discussion about the 2024 comp plan update, so if you have public comments related to something other than that, now's the time.
And I do see one person with their hand up, so I'm gonna go ahead and promote Mary Wichter right now.
Hi, this is Mary Wichter, and thanks for having the meeting tonight. I had emailed something in for non-agenda and a few agenda items, but I just wanted to double-check since we're going through a lot of things, if the vision statement is actually really settled. I know they did a lot of work on it. Are we using the old one? Are we doing the new one? Or are there any revisions? Or at least for the public who's gonna be looking at the 2024 comp plan, if we could have a copy of that somewhere that's easy for people to see. Also, the city in the past had had a logo, kind of, they were looking at doing a new one. I love the current one. I know they used some grant money, and then they found out, boy, it would just cost a lot. It would be prohibitively costly to actually implement a new logo with all the changes that have to be made, so I believe that was stopped, and I am perfectly happy with the current logo. But as you're gonna do a lot of public comment meetings this year, I just thought I'd double-check on those. And then on critical areas, you are updating those simultaneously with Development Regulations Phase 3, and it's really important because in the comp plan, if you're gonna do processes and have them firmly in code and support them, they also need to be reflected in the comp plan. So the natural features and hazards do need to be identified and protected with stronger considerations and updates, and that does mean that there will be goals and policies and update changes in the comp plan that will need to happen to support those. And I had attached an example of steep slopes. It says, steep slopes are supposed to limit development potential as wetlands are, and there is a map which finally got a legend put on it, and I just think we need to do those. And then I just wanted to say a little bit about transfer of development rights. It is a program that the city has, but it's stalled. It is not functional. It will protect the environment. It will put development where it should be and not where it shouldn't be, which does save the environment. And I'm not on social media, but I've heard or read from other people that the Emerald Necklace is on the fringes of our city, and the TDRs were originally designed so that wouldn't be fully developed out and they could occur places if there were infrastructure to have. Also, TDRs are transfer of development rights. Those do help address climate change and reduce greenhouse gases. So not having a functional program will really hurt us, and having one, there's already a doc written for it, and it seems like council's interested in it. And then I won't read the rest of the stuff. You got my email, and I also, the way this meeting's being hosted by Zoom, I can't see the timer, and I didn't set my own timer today. So I think that's my three minutes. Thanks.
Mary, we'll let you borrow those 30 seconds for next time. Anyone else with public comment, non-agenda?
Yes, and we have a Paul Stickney. I'm gonna go ahead and promote you to panelist right now.
Let's see. There we go. Hello, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney here. Tonight, I'd like to talk about what I think is the most important thing for Sammamish, which is land use direction, not just for now, but for multiple generations to come. And land use direction underpins most everything. Desired outcomes enabled by how we use our land are paramount. Which land use approaches add the most enrichments for our residents and city in balanced, sustainable, holistic ways? It starts with getting information, and where the information starts is with the housing needs analysis, is to get data on over 120 surplus or deficient housing gaps based on economic and demographic makeup of our community. And our city knows how to do it. I sent this in today. In 2003, our city got precise gaps for three categories from 0 to 100 AMI, and we knew precisely the shortage gaps, and we need to do that for all economic and demographic needs. I am not saying that the community needs to meet every need that is identified. What I am saying is we need to know what those needs are, have community discussions about the consequences of meeting them or not, and then making policy on numbers for different types of housing. There are three examples to illustrate why we should get all economic surplus and shortage gaps. We have 172 intersections that we measure in our community for concurrency. If we only measured 20 to 30 of those and lumped all the rest into one category, we wouldn't have the information we need. Take the city's budget. There's like 900 items. If we knew 100, but we lumped 800 together into one category, we don't have the data. Same thing goes for wetlands. There's over 100 in the city. If we knew precisely how 10 were rated, but the other 90 were lumped into one category, we couldn't judge what to do. That's what's happened with housing needs over the last 20 years. We have 85% of our households in one category, and you can't manage what you don't measure. Now, there are three major differences in Sammamish, why it's important to get all economic and demographic information, specific gaps. Our housing supplies are far more out of balance than our neighboring cities. They tend to have a better mix of housing based on their makeups. Second, our community is lopsided. Over 85% of our households make over 100% income. And third, our growth targets are far smaller, which is fine from a regional perspective, but not fine for meeting internal needs over time of different and diverse housing. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight on land use direction. Have a great meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney, and I do not see any other hands raised.
Okay, thanks. Let's move on to our new business for this evening. First, we have a director's report from Kelly Hildy.
Okay, there we go. Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight, I will be providing a brief director's report updating the commission on changes to the work program as directed by City Council, which has slightly modified the Planning Commission meeting schedule for the rest of 2022. I'll also provide a quick update on recruitment of the recently vacated Planning Commission seat. And lastly, I'd like to promote two surveys currently underway. Next slide, thank you. The Planning Commission's work program has changed slightly. As we're reviewing these changes, I'd also like to provide a quick update on the work that already has been in front of the Planning Commission this year. And let's start with community visioning. The Community Visioning Project has been completed, and the final report has been handed over to City Council. Council will pick this back up later this year or the beginning of 2023 as part of the 2024 periodic update of the comprehensive plan. The Housing Action Plan is currently underway. We will be back with an update to the City Council and the Planning Commission at a joint meeting scheduled for September 20th. Please note that this meeting will begin at 5:30 PM. Because we are meeting on September 20th, the September 15th regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting will be canceled. Some good news. Amendments to the surface water regulations were adopted by City Council on June 21st. Work on amendments to the school concurrency code are still in progress, and we anticipate bringing this back to council later this fall. As for the draft scope of work for the Critical Areas Ordinance Update, this was presented to City Council last Tuesday. City Council directed staff to prepare a 2023-2024 budget proposal for the scope of work presented, including all the options. City Council will begin review of the 23-24 bi-annual budget starting in September, with adoption anticipated for November. Work on the 2022 docket, which included updating the comp, oops. Oh, this, I got a lot to say on this slide, so we'll be here for a while. There's been a lot of good work happening. Work on the 2022 docket, which included updating the comprehensive plan and development regulations related to the Bluma EIS, was originally scheduled to be in front of the Planning Commission last month and this month. This work has been deferred to the 2024 periodic update of the comprehensive plan as directed by City Council on July 5th. This explains why we needed to cancel a meeting in June and in July. Implementation of the Urban Forest Management Program is currently underway, and staff will provide an update on its progress at the end of the year and ahead of publishing the 2022 annual report. Review and recommendation of traffic impact fees has been delayed slightly. This was originally scheduled to be in front of the Planning Commission in September and October. Public Works is currently working on updating the project timeline, and we should know shortly when those dates will be rescheduled. Also, if we receive applications from the public to amend the comprehensive plan and development regulations, those applications will be presented at a joint meeting between the City Council and Planning Commission on September 20th. And Evan, can you remind me when the deadline to submit amendments are? So 5:00 PM on the first Monday of August, and we will look that up for you.
August 1st.
Which is August 1st. That makes it really easy. More good news, and this is late and breaking news. The city received a grant to fund a greenhouse gas emissions and vehicle miles traveled reduction study. This has been added to our work program, starting now, as the final strategy must be completed by the grant deadline set for June 2023. Staff is currently working on that timeline, and we should have dates for Planning Commission and City Council shortly. And lastly, we will be providing an overview of the city's transfer of development rights program to the Planning Commission on September 1st. We did this presentation last week to City Council and have been directed to include work on updating our transfer of development rights program, including in our local agreement with King County as part of the 2024 comprehensive plan periodic update. Next slide. And as you all know, Commissioner O'Farrell was appointed to the City Council on July 12th, which leaves a vacant seat on the Planning Commission. City Council will be interviewing potential candidates and hopefully filling the vacant seat on September 6th. And lastly, we have two community surveys open at the moment. The first survey is the Sammamish Housing Survey, which opened to the public on July 11th. The deadline to complete this survey is July 31st, so please spread the word. You were all sent to email, I believe, last week by Evan, with a link to the survey, so if you can email it to your HOAs or your friends in Sammamish, anyone who you know works in Sammamish, we'd really appreciate the feedback. We are also asking the community to please provide their feedback on who the city should consider partnering with to help grow our urban forest management program, and what urban forest and tree-related topics would the community like to learn more about. As we start to develop a community education program, this would be really great to know what our community actually wants to learn. And so far, the feedback has been great, so we encourage folks to please complete that survey. And that is open. We haven't set a deadline. We'll just keep it open to gather that feedback. Both links can be found on the slide. It is also on our webpage. Both links are on our webpage. And with that, that concludes my report, and I will take any questions. If we need to further discuss anything that I've reported out on tonight, we can look at how we can add that to a Planning Commission upcoming meeting, if it requires a long conversation. We have a really great presentation on the comprehensive tonight, our comprehensive plan tonight that I think's gonna take some time.
I can't help but also point out that the other person appointed to the City Council is Rutugian DePere, who is a former Planning Commissioner. So go Planning Commission.
Go Planning Commission. I agree.
Any questions or comments for Kelly? Jerry, did you have something? Nope, I just thought I saw your hand up there for a second. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Is it up or down?
No, now it's up. Yep.
Okay, I gotta watch I click here. Sorry. Thanks, Kelly.
And I'm not wearing my glasses, so you know, sometimes that stuff sneaks by me. Okay, next, let's move on to the main topic for this evening, which is a opening session, preview and discussion about the 2024 comp plan update.
Great. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jeff Arango with Framework. Thanks for the opportunity to be here tonight and give a presentation on the scoping and public outreach plan for comp plan update. We're really excited to continue our work with the community on this really important project and get your input at the meeting tonight and as we go through the process. So thanks again. Let me just share my screen. Okay, so this is a slightly revised version of the presentation that we gave at the City Council on July 12th. So we have an initial scope of work that was approved with our initial contract, and as Kelly said, we're working to refine the scope and look at the budget impacts for the next two-year cycle. And we've been in front of the City Council to get their input, and we're here tonight with you to get your input as well. So just real briefly, this is kind of the core project team. I'll be serving as the project manager for our team. We have a number of subconsultants playing important roles. We have Sterling Mountain, Community Planning and Design, Code Studio, who you may recognize from the Development Regulations Phase 2 project, Site Story, and we have Ellen Southard here tonight to present some thoughts on the public engagement plan, and Annie Seeger with Seeger Consulting to assist with housing and primarily with capital facilities, including the financial analysis. The current scope of work has four main tasks: project management, existing conditions and code audit. This would include things like reviewing the Department of Commerce checklist, which includes several new requirements, which I'll go through in a few moments, public engagement, and there are requirements under the Growth Management Act for public engagement, which we'll go through, and then the comprehensive plan elements, which includes updates to all of the existing elements, as well as a couple of new ones that we'll be adding and discussing here this evening. So there is a lot going on, as you know, in terms of planning in the city of Sammamish, and the comprehensive plan, to some degree, is kind of the umbrella for these various efforts that will also feed into the comprehensive plan. So the community visioning process, which has been completed, but we will sort of pick up the vision as part of the comp plan process, and there will likely be some refinement there. The Climate Action Plan, which is partially funded by the grant, and we're still working on the scoping of that. The Housing Action Plan, which will feed into the housing element. The Parks Plan as well will be updated and will feed into the Parks Element. Transportation planning work, which will be under a separate contract, but will be primarily responsible for developing the transportation element. Critical Areas Ordinance Update, which I know you're familiar with, stormwater planning, the TDR program, and then updates to the Development Regulations, which would include the Phase 3 topics, as well as those that have been identified that need to be implemented to maintain consistency with the plan and the regulations. So we look forward to working with all of the teams that are involved in these projects, and we plan to have a broader kickoff meeting in the next few weeks to bring these groups together and talk about coordination. So I think one of the things that we're a little concerned about is stakeholder and engagement fatigue. So I think to the extent that we can provide seamless opportunities for input on these topics, we're likely to get more participation overall. And as you can see, it's a fairly lengthy timeframe. We do have until the end of 2024 to complete this work, and there could be some portions of the Development Regulations that are addressed in 2025 as well. So this is what's referred to as a periodic update. It's generally been required every eight years, although there's been changes to the state law, which I'll go through in a moment. We must be consistent with the regional plan for the Puget Sound Regional Council called Vision 2050, consistency with the King County countywide planning policies, and we must be complete by December 31st, 2024. We can complete it certainly early, but that is the end date. So in terms of plan review and certification, there are a couple of requirements. The first is that the plan does need to be formally certified by the Puget Sound Regional Council for consistency with Vision 2050. After the meeting, we'll provide a PDF of the presentation, and I've linked some resources for those of you that would like to investigate further. The PSRC is generally made up of elected officials from the jurisdictions within the boundaries. There is sort of the general assembly, and then there are different committees, but it is ultimately approved by the Executive Board, which I believe is elected from the sort of main body. But you can be assured that that board is made up of elected officials from jurisdictions within the PSRC district. There is a requirement to notify and send for review to the Department of Commerce. There is not a formal approval, but they do review it and provide comments and feedback. There is review by the King County Growth Management Council, and this is somewhat in flux at this point. There are discussions about developing formal affordable housing targets and potentially a formal certification program. We will certainly keep the Planning Commission up to date on that topic as it evolves. And then I've also linked the 2015 certification report for the existing comprehensive plan, and then PSRC has recently updated their review manual for kind of the process for how the plans get reviewed and certified. So that link is in there as well if you are interested in taking a look. Okay, so there's been a lot of recent legislation, as you may know, that affect the comp plan in different ways. And you know, some of this, because it's kind of the first periodic update that will be taken on by communities under these new laws, there is some, you know, uncertainty to some degree about how some of this stuff will apply, but some of it is clearer than others. So the periodic update cycle, in accordance with House Bill 1241, will be extended from eight years to 10 years. So if this is adopted in 2024, we can expect to have a new requirement for a periodic update in 2034. And they also gave us six extra months to complete it. Typically, it's June 30th. It's been extended to December 31st. The other key part of this bill is that it requires larger counties and cities, which would include Sammamish, to submit an implementation progress report on key outcomes. And I bolded some of the key texts here. Five years after the plan is adopted, and this sort of implementation progress report would basically identify or, yeah, identify sort of consistency with development outcomes and the vision and goals of the comprehensive plan. I think the idea is if there is inconsistency, then there would be some potentially further changes to either the plan or regulations to sort of bring development outcomes into more consistency with the comp plan. The Housing Unit Inventory Bill is about removing barriers that limit housing options, so it's about providing or not regulating the number of unrelated people, which is a very common standard among any zoning codes. It's often, you know, limited to like six unrelated persons. 1220 deals with emergency shelters and housing, and I bolded some of those statements. So you have to have a statement of goals, policies, and objectives, and mandatory provisions for moderate-density housing within urban growth areas. Need to identify sufficient land capacity for housing within UGAs. Consider things like duplexes, triplexes, and townhomes, which we do know are allowed in travel zones in Sammamish currently. Identify local policies and regulations that result in racially disparate impacts, displacement, and inclusion in housing. Identify areas at higher risk of displacement and establish anti-displacement policies where necessary. Senate Bill 5593 deals with urban growth area revisions. It applies primarily to counties because they have the ultimate authority in UGA areas, but it's essentially, again, kind of like the implementation report, it's sort of a mechanism for counties to kind of look at the development that is happening with urban growth areas and to make any adjustments. And then House Bill 1717 requires tribal participation in GMA planning, so the public engagement plan for this effort will include an approach to involving the tribes in the process. Senate Bill 5818 deals with the State Environmental Policy Act, and basically provides greater exemptions for the expansion of housing. It does provide an exemption if there'd be adverse impacts on fish habitat. So it's essentially just changing the threshold for which you'd have to go through a SEPA process. In my experience, most, you know, housing projects of moderate scale do not generally get to the level of having to require NEIS. But this would, if the exemption levels were increased, would essentially not even require a checkload story, any review under SEPA. So now we'll move into the Growth Management Act public participation requirements. These are basically directly from the Growth Management Act. So it requires us to involve the public early and often. We need broad dissemination of proposals and alternatives, so people need to be aware, be educated, have access to materials. be educated, have access to materials and be able to comment. And we need to provide opportunities for written comments. We need to have public meetings and give proper notice. Provide venues for open discussion, have communication programs, information services and consideration of and responses to public comments. And I think many of these things, the city of Sumamish and many communities are already doing as part of their planning programs, but we need to be, you know, focused on making sure that we're meeting all of these requirements. And then the current public engagement scope of work is, the first is the Public Engagement Plan, which is under development. And we do plan to come back to the Planning Commission to provide a presentation and seek input before that's finalized. We want to make sure you're involved and have input on that. We have resources for stakeholder interviews and focus groups, so we can get some more targeted input. We're planning to do some pop-up engagement activities and kind of busy locations or at community events to kind of build awareness about the project and get some early input. We're planning to do a project website, style guide and communication materials. And that will be kind of the main venue for people to get information online. And we tend to design these sites so that there's opportunities for input as well, whether it's something like an online open house, a general comment form, a blog post with opportunities for people to submit comments directly to us. We want to make sure that we're accessible. The main kind of in-person event that we're planning for the comp plan is what we're calling a Planning Summit. It's sort of like a larger kind of workshop and one that we could involve all of the people that are working on those other related projects and get input in sort of one location and kind of consider the issues holistically. We're planning to do a series of staff workshops because many departments in the city are involved in the comprehensive plan, the implementation and some of those various projects. So we want to make sure that we have really good communication and are getting staff input along the way. We do have some resources for what we're calling a Visioning and Scoping Workshop. We have, again, met with the city council in our meeting with you here tonight about scoping. But there will be some further discussion, as Kelly said earlier, about the vision statement as well. As we get kind of towards the draft plan stage, we would host an open house. And our current kind of methods are to do an in-person open house, but also have an online open house. For those that aren't able to attend, we may be able to provide a virtual component to the in-person open house as well, depending on technology and the capabilities there. But we definitely want to provide both in-person and virtual opportunities because we'll get more input that way. And then we'll have several meetings with the city council, with the Planning Commission and other boards and commissions as appropriate. I think we have in the scope now, something like 16 meetings currently. And then we do have some resources for some online surveys. Again, these are intended to be opportunities for people to give kind of general qualitative input around the vision and goals and respond potentially to some of the early drafts of the plan. These are not meant to be statistically valid and we are certainly aware that there have been many community surveys and we want to kind of avoid fatigue. So we'll try to keep it short and targeted and something that people could fill out in a relatively short amount of time. All right. So just to summarize, at the city council meeting on July 12th, we asked some questions of them in terms of input on the Public Engagement Plan. One of those was sort of the level of support for in-person versus digital engagement. We've had, you know, some clients really want us to do mostly in-person. Others have wanted to focus more on digital. Our experience, particularly over the last several years, is to do a mix. I think if you're only doing in-person engagement in a large, fairly large city with, you know, 70,000 residents, you're not really going to necessarily achieve big, big numbers. But at the same time, you really can't recreate those in-person conversations that you have. So there's a lot of value there. And then on the digital engagement side, we have a number of new tools that we've been using with success. And that's bringing in a lot more feedback and getting a lot more people to participate in the process, which is fantastic. The other thing we would be interested in some of your input on and something that we want to include in the Public Engagement Plan is how do we sort of measure success in terms of public engagement, right? It's got to be more than just inviting people to a meeting and seeing who shows up, you know? Do we want to target the number of people that have provided input or been involved? We can look at things like website visits and participation and online engagement tools like the online open house, survey responses, attendance at public meetings, engagement with translated materials, making sure that we're consistent with some of the outreach guidance envisioned in 2050. One of our new engagement tools and sort of data communication tools is called My Sidewalk. That tool will be available to the community during the entire project. And we pulled a report template called the Public Engagement Guide. These reports can be customized to Sumamish in terms of the text and content. But and we will be doing that during the project. But at this point, we simply put in Sumamish's information and it puts out a bunch of information, which you see here on the right side. And that can help us inform kind of our approach to engagement, you know? How important is translation? How important or what is the access to sort of computers and mobile devices, which you can see is very high here? So it helps us kind of target our engagement strategies to the communities that we're working with. And there's a variety of other types of reports and data and maps that we can pull and be able to share with the community on the project website. Now Ellen's going to just talk about, a little bit about some of the tools that they've used for public engagement.
Thanks, Jeff, and thanks to all of you for having us here tonight. We look forward to hearing from you and getting your feedback. You know, we've, Site Story has done a lot of work in the last few years since the pandemic in terms of keeping planning projects rolling and getting community feedback and engaging effectively with different stakeholder groups. So as has Framework. So, you know, we're really, we've talked a lot about shared values and how to encourage people at a time like this to participate. So we do plan on using a lot of tools. Some of the COVID-safe activities we've done even in person is using bar or QR code tags and things like that and signage. This particular example was some work we did in Fremont, where we had QR tags posted throughout the neighborhood. And then we also really want to focus on transparency too. So how do, how do we let the public know that we're hearing them? That they're actively, that we're actively engaged in their concerns. And so, you know, we do a lot of different graphics. And I know this has been a priority of the city staff to, just in terms of communicating back. But again, making sure things are accessible. So, you know, really kind of thinking outside the box in terms of how we might move, move people to the plan online, but also to events where they might feel safe participating. Next slide, please. And then although, as Jeff said, we've looked at My Sidewalk. We've also looked at all the current demographics and census data on Sumamish and looked at language issues. And although you have a small group of people that are limited in English, there are still, it's a very diverse community. And so there's a lot of access through ethnic media and still home country languages where we can provide information and again, drive people to the planning process and invite them to participate. We do plan on joining some cultural events throughout this process. We can provide translation. And then really, one of the things that we have focused on in the past is home country experiences. So getting people to share what was their home country experience before they landed in Sumamish. What were their concerns there versus their concerns now? And really, you know, thinking about what's the next 25? I mean, this aligns with your 25th anniversary. And so we're excited to be part of that and to really encourage your community, which has grown exponentially and is somewhat new in some ways, to participate in what the next 25 years are like. And then Jeff mentioned, we're going to have a variety of focus groups, which will include businesses, the faith community, community organizations, but we also really value the opportunity to get a multi-generational feedback. We've done a lot of work with youth. We are planning some youth workshops. We think it's really important to, especially where junior and senior high is concerned. By the time something might go to bond, they may be voting. And so we've always encouraged youth to participate in planning projects and really exercise their first opportunity to vote. And then encouraging seniors as well. And some of the reasons why we want to use a wide spectrum of tools is thinking about, again, accessibility and folks who may not want to be out during a pandemic or who just aren't feeling comfortable speaking in public settings. And so we will provide a number of tools for seniors. We like to call them our armchair gatherings and provide virtual opportunities as well as reaching out to senior groups that have gathered already. So just a few ideas of how we will be proactive in engaging a broad spectrum of the population of Sumamish. And with that, Jeff, there we go.
Thanks, Ellen. So this is a list of the subtasks for Task Four in our current scope of work. And this involves the updates to the elements specifically. So right now, the comprehensive plan is organized into two volumes. Volume one is the goals and policies and volume two is the background information. I expect we'll retain that to some degree. So we will be creating kind of a new design template and also the city council expressed support for creating a web-based plan. So essentially what a web-based plan is, the project website will eventually be turned into essentially the plan and all of the content in the plan you can access through the website. There will also likely be still a print version for legal purposes, but the website would be the most accessible way to access the plan. Maps and graphics, we'll have all new maps and graphics for the project. And then it just lists all of the existing elements in regular text. And then the optional elements, which the council has expressed support for and would be new, are an economic development element and the climate change element. We have resources to develop the draft plan, which would then go out to the public and be presented to the Planning Commission, the council and others. We'd get feedback on that. We have resources for development regulations updates, which would typically happen kind of towards the last, you know, maybe six to eight months of the project and would be adopted with the plan at the end of 2024. And then some resources to help with CEPA support and prepare that documentation as well. And these, as I just said, were some of the direction that we got from the council. Support for both the climate change and economic development elements, support for a web-based plan. If you would like, are interested in seeing kind of a really sophisticated version of a web-based plan, that was well-resourced for a larger city. You could check out planokc.org, I think it is, which is Oklahoma City's web-based plan. Again, larger city, but I think is a good example of the benefits of going in that direction. And there is a print version on there as well. And then support for budgeting for a climate action plan. Climate Action Plan is sort of, you know, a larger effort than just developing the climate change element. And so we're working through with city staff what that would look like. And then for those that would like to take a look at the existing comprehensive plan, if you haven't already, it's hosted on the, with the municipal code on code publishing. And there's a link in the presentation. And then this is just a screenshot of what it looks like when you go to it and you click on each of the individual elements. And you can click on volume one or volume two and it'll pull up all of those sections together. And then in terms of next steps, we are continuing to work on the Public Participation Plan and we will be bringing that back to the Planning Commission and City Council, working to finalize the scope of work and timeline. And then the coordination with related projects. So we're planning to have that broader kickoff with the staff and start to build those relationships. And then, you know, the work will likely pick up in the fall. So that's all we had to present tonight. Be happy to open up for questions and comments. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. I think we'll just go ahead and open it up for questions. I, at the moment, can't. Okay, Mike, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah. Well, thanks for that. Very comprehensive overview of what engagement's going to be around the comprehensive plan. I have a question about how those we engage might be educated. So for example, towards the end, you talked about the climate change or the economic development pieces. And I could venture a guess that a number of people might have an idea about what would be contained in those, but wouldn't know necessarily what is likely. Or another example would be, you know, new ways of handling traffic, whether it's through technology or different ways of, you know, roundabouts and how they can help or whatever. So it's one thing to have engagement where we listen. It's another thing if the people are really informed. And so how would you propose informing those that you're engaging and getting input from?
Yeah, great comment. I completely agree with you. I think, you know, the community needs resources and information in order to effectively provide input, right? I mean, the comprehensive plan can be maybe a little bit overwhelming, right? It includes a lot of things and a lot of technical information. And I think our job is to really distill that down in a way that it's easy to understand and it's accessible. So we'll do that in a number of ways. Task Two deals with kind of existing conditions. And that'll result in probably a fairly lengthy report. But I think we can use some of our tools like My Sidewalk to be able to communicate that information through the website so that people have a common understanding of sort of the makeup of the community and some of the factors that we want to consider as we develop the comprehensive plan. So we will have a lot of information on the website. We could have an FAQ on there that has sort of general responses to frequently asked questions. And then all of our in-person or online engagement events would typically include some sort of presentation or orientation from the consultant team that would go through kind of the background information and allow people to ask questions and then engage in the process. The other thing which we've done on other projects and could be great for the Planning Summit is to bring in maybe people involved in other cities that are, have good examples that might be interesting to the community or other kind of regional organizations where we can kind of bring in some case study examples to show how other communities have done it. That can be a really interesting way to go. So I think we're going to kind of leverage the digital tools, the reports, and again, try to make that as accessible as possible. And I think also make ourselves available if people have questions and submit comments on some of the documents. We can respond to those and then report those out to the community so people can.
Jeff, that sounds good. I would just, I guess, encourage that especially for the in-person or online forums where there's more of a dialogue. You mentioned about having presentations. I think that's super important. So that, I think that's probably more effective than expecting that people might read FAQs or inform themselves before filling out a survey. And so I might actually wait some of the comments that come in through those open dialogue forums a little bit more highly than just the online surveys, just based on the knowledge that the respondents may have. So thank you.
Yeah, just one other comment too. And I think where we can like record presentations and things like that and put videos up for folks to be able to look offline, we would certainly do that. We have done that in the past. So thanks for the comment.
Commissioner Norman.
I've got a couple of questions for you, Jeff. You alluded to several House bills. It's my understanding those are bills pending. They're not yet existing law. Is that correct?
No, those have all been, those have all been adopted.
They all have been adopted, okay. And then on 5818, for example, that Senate bill, there's a lot of verbiage in there that encourages things, but it doesn't. there's a lot of verbiage in there that encourages things, but it doesn't require things. Are you, you know, part of what you're going to do? Parse out the difference and help us walk through what we really have to do versus what they're suggesting? Because they really dig pretty deep into housing and zoning.
Yes, yes, that would be our approach.
Okay. The other question was, how do you define stakeholder?
I mean, I think for the comprehensive plan, it is the entire community. And I think those that work in Sammamish and those that have a connection to the community, we certainly would be willing to accept their input. I think there are maybe certain topics where you might want to focus, like Ellen showed on some of her slides, like, you know, engaging the youth community, the senior community. I think there are certain stakeholder groups that we will target. But I think at the broad level, it's the entire community that we want to be open to input from.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bosworth.
Thank you. Good evening. Appreciate the presentation. I want to second what Mike said. In the current comp plan, in the public outreach, it says, I quote, "Most people are not familiar, were not familiar with the comprehensive plan." So I definitely think we do need to help educate them a bit because I think they're caught off guard a bit when they then get surveyed, especially during this review in terms of the housing survey, sort of like, why are we doing this? What are we doing? But if you read the comp plan, it's, it's part of it. Housing is a big element. And, you know, I was surprised as I am starting to review the comp plan that it's not super dense or hard to read. It's actually pretty, pretty easy to read. So it would be great if more folks would just venture in and check it out. My question, my other question was, how are we measuring our success against the comp plan to date? Are there, is there information that you would get from staff and the city about how we're doing against our current plan? So if we're asking people to comment on it and they ask, you know, well, how are we doing? Do we know? And as I read the plan, oh, go ahead. I would just say, as I read the plan, some things were super specific. Like there's one in the utilities that talks about providing recycling events each year. We totally do that. I go to them. They're awesome. That's an easy one. Done. Check. But then there's other things like encourage opportunities for households to generate their own energy. I don't know where we are at on that one.
Yeah, great question. So Task 2 is specifically targeted at auditing the current plan as well as looking at existing conditions and maybe how things have changed since the last comp plan was adopted. And as part of that work, we'll be doing a Department of Commerce checklist. And that sort of goes through all of the legal requirements, including several of the new ones that we went over earlier tonight. So there's a technical component of that and that will be available to the public. And basically, that is specifically to identify any misalignment between the Growth Management Act and the current plan. In terms of other things that are not legal requirements, but are sort of community priorities, we can also look at that as well. As you said, some are pretty easy to measure, like if you're having the recycling events. Others are a little bit more, you know, not quite as prescriptive. And so we can do our best to kind of summarize that. And I think the other piece of that is it's an opportunity to reassess your priorities. We're huge believers that a plan is, you know, it's a call to action. It's for the community to implement their vision and get all the things that they want. And if there are things that are in there that have been languishing and maybe really aren't priorities, or it's not clear enough the plan to really know what to do with. I mean, sometimes you read encourage and you're like, I don't really know maybe how best to encourage that. So I think there's an opportunity to reassess those priorities with the community. But our, one of our early tasks will be to review the plan and communicate that to the public in terms of what we're seeing for outcomes. And we do have some experience on that topic because we were involved in development regulations phase two, which was specifically about better aligning the regulations of the comp plan.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had one final comment in terms of groups to reach out to. Definitely want to encourage if there's a way to hook into HOAs, especially, you know, we have, in my HOA, we have land and trails. And so as I've started to participate more, you know, I hear about concepts at these meetings. I start thinking about how that could be directly translated to my neighborhood. And so definitely want to find a way to engage with them. I think that would be a good opportunity.
Thank you.
Commissioner Labby, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir.
How about you, Mr. Armando?
Thanks, Jeff, for going over that with us. I was curious if you could give us a little bit more detail on Senate Bill 5593, the one that you mentioned quickly about the urban growth area or boundary? And what exactly that entails? Or not exactly, but just broadly.
Yeah, sure. There is a lot of detail on the slide about it, but it's basically about sizing your urban growth area. And the counties, again, have the primarily responsibility for that, but they work with the cities. And basically, there's, under the Growth Management Act, there's really specific requirements about how big that urban growth area can be, right? And the idea is, you know, develop in the city as much as you can and only expand the urban growth area where it's justified. And there's been some counties that have been challenged on that. Spokane County was challenged on the size of their urban growth areas and I believe lost that challenge. And so they've been dealing with the outcomes of that lawsuit and have limitations in terms of modifications that they can make to the urban growth area. They essentially can't increase it at this time, but they're also about to go through their comp plan update. So it's essentially, I think, meant to ensure that urban growth areas aren't oversized and kind of like the monitoring requirements, they want cities to kind of take a look at it and say, you know, is this being developed as we intended or not? And I think that is kind of the crux of that bill.
So really no direct impact on Sammamish? Okay.
Not unless there were modifications to the urban growth area boundaries. But yeah, not, not, not a big impact to the Sammamish that I would anticipate.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple of comments, maybe questions on the public participation portion of it. I'd like to encourage the city as much as possible to put it into bite-sized pieces and make it really relevant to people's lives.
Yeah.
It's easy for us to nerd out on the comp plan and think it's really important and we really should read it, but no one really cares. It's like asking people to look at the technical schematics to find it if they want heated seats. It's, that's not how people live their lives. So I'd encourage us to kind of take a step back and look at the outcomes that people will have from it and ask them questions based on that. On the website visits as being a measure of success, you had mentioned, that alone, I don't think, is a good measure of success. It's what happens once they get there. So if someone, if someone were to come to me and say, look, we had X number of visits, I wouldn't care unless it told me a better story than that. WhatsApp as a social network is a great tool to engage some communities, which index super high on that platform. It's, it's a, it's a sharing-based system though. So you have to gain access to influencers or through another channel, through another social channel, to get on there. But it's a sharing-based platform, so that might be a good way to reach some communities. And then I was curious if we had looked into telephone town halls. We can't auto-dial cell phones, but there are a significant portion of the population that might not want to leave home, who would still have a landline, and we could engage people that way. So those are my comments and, yeah.
Yeah, those are all really excellent comments. I totally agree about making it tangible to people's lives. We've actually been talking about that recently as we've been putting the public engagement plan together. Appreciate the comments about the website visits. You know, I can see how that may not be the best measure. Loosely familiar with the WhatsApp. And then in terms of town halls, we've been talking about that as well. Hadn't thought about the phone one, but that is intriguing. We did for a comp plan for another community, do some Facebook Live kind of town halls. And that could be another option. And we could maybe pair that up with some of the digital tools that we've used to do things like live polling and stuff like that, which could, I think, make it fun and kind of tangible. And there would be a recording, you know, for people to participate. Maybe some of those are, you know, on specific topics that are tangible to people's lives. I completely agree with, with that sentiment, so thank you.
I think I'm an influencer, aren't I?
Yeah, you sure are.
Okay. I had a couple of comments and, well, a couple of questions, but a comment first. I think that it's important, so one of the things as I was, I was reading through this a little bit and thinking about it is, when I first originally joined the planning commission, it was the beginning of 2018. And one of the things that occurred was, and I think it was Rituja and I at that point, I may be remembering that wrong, but one of the things that occurred was we were handed a binder with the comp plan printed in it. And so I just encourage people to think about how much things have just changed in those, you know, four, five-ish years. And the purpose of the comp plan is really not for today. It's for more into the future and particularly, you know, 20-plus years into the future. So things can change quickly. And I just encourage remembering that as we review this comp plan. This is a discussion about the future, not so much the present. And I tried to find, I had hoped that maybe I had saved that binder, but at one point I think I recycled it. So I unfortunately couldn't bring it just to prove that I was remembering that right. So one of the questions, Jeff, that I had was that in the packet that we had and materials, there was some discussion or a fair amount of discussion about the difference between mandatory things that we need to do. And, you know, I think the word was optional or additional things that we need to do. And I'm curious about the approach to that. And what I mean by that is, for example, if many of the mandatory things have sort of a limited range of options or the latitude that we have is pretty minimal, then it's useful to know that for the commission, for the council, for everybody involved so that we can allocate our time more efficiently towards the things that we do have more latitude with, I think. And how do you manage that so that people understand the things we're talking about, whether they're mandatory or optional, and how we spend our time effectively?
Yeah, good question. I would say even though an element is mandatory or optional, there's still, you know, quite a bit of local decision-making and consideration that is involved in that. You know, certainly, you know, as you've seen from the recent legislation, the requirements are increasing, right? And so there's likely a few additional things, particularly the things related to housing, where there's more mandates that we're going to have to comply with. And we're going to need to be able to communicate that to the public, right? So that they understand kind of the direction that we need to head and for them to be able to provide input on that. I think where we have options, we want to present that as well. And I think one of our primary ways to do that is through the land use alternatives, right? And the land use alternatives are a way to kind of think about different ways that we would like to see the city develop. Ideally, all of those would be consistent with the vision statement. But it's an opportunity to explore things that we may end up deciding we didn't really like, but we went through the process and considered the various options and impacts of that. So I think, you know, to your point, that's kind of how we would communicate to people in terms of what are the state or regional requirements, where there's opportunities for local decision-making and allow them opportunities to provide input and feedback on what those options are before we end up kind of finalizing the direction of the comp plan. But that land use element is going to be one of our kind of early pieces of the plan once we get through existing conditions. And I know we'll be working closely with the planning commission to develop those alternatives.
And since you mentioned the land use element, I think another suggestion would be, which is kind of a reflection of what others have said as well, is that, you know, we probably all realize that the comp plan isn't something people rush home to read the next chapter of. But in order to have good public input, I think it's important to help people at the start to recognize what the comp plan is, but also what it isn't, so that we can talk about things that are actually a part of the comp plan. And when we get into land use, there are things that the comp plan is and there are things that it isn't. And we should try to encourage people to spend the time and energy on the things that it is and recognize, for example, development regulations or development regulations, which is not part of necessarily the comp plan, you know. And I think part of the education needs to be just as much about what the comp plan isn't supposed to be doing as much as what it is supposed to be doing.
Yeah. Completely agree with you there. And I think, you know, part of that is explaining that, you know, the comp plan really sets the stage for other planning efforts over the, you know, 20 or so year period. And it's not meant to have, you know, as much detail as a sub-area the plant might or some of the more focused efforts that the city's been working on. So, agreed.
And then the last thing, I was going to just mention a couple of things about the, the public outreach and the communication and so on. And even though apparently I'm not an influencer, I still do think there are some things that resonate with me. One of the things I really liked was the QR code that Ellen showed with the Fremont Troll project. And I think if we could figure out a way to consistently through the course of this project, create a central location where people can go, whether it's for a survey or information or to get a link to the Facebook page or whatever it is. And if that QR code can be that link that people always, you know, whether it's on a bulletin board at City Hall, on the city's website, on whatever, it's a consistent way that people always get to a central location where things are at. That may, it becomes easy. And I also personally think that those QR codes are, it's an incentive for people with their phone to figure out what it's about, right? Because it's sort of a mystery. You don't know what it is and people can get drawn in. And I think that might be a valuable strategy. I also think there's some old-school stuff, like, you know, we have, we have lots of different, we have banners that we hang over 228 where everybody drives. Super old school, but, you know, that's a city thing that every once in a while you throw a banner up there and say, hey, go to this website or do, you know, something like that. So a mixture of both, both some social media stuff and not ignoring some of those old-school connections, I think, will help along the way. But again, being very consistent that if you went there before, you'll go there again if you're, you know, connecting to this, this undertaking of the comp plan. It's in a centralized location. I think that might be as important as anything. And frankly, this is long enough. Who knows, there might be a new social media app that we have to figure out between now and the end of this project. Okay, Commissioner Briscoe, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, this won't be as profound as the comments you were just making, but I just have a quick question for clarification. Under the measures of success, one of the measures was consistency with Vision 2050. And that seemed odd to me as a measure of success, that the comments that people are making are consistent with the vision. Could you please explain that a little bit?
Yeah, my apologies. I communicated that poorly. There is an equity engagement tool that Vision 2050 has put out that we've been looking at. And so that's something that we're going to be exploring as we're putting the public engagement plan. And that was what I was referring to. So apologies for the confusion there.
Thanks for the clarification.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
Yeah, Mark, if I can add one really quick point. PSRC, MRSC, Washington, Association of Washington Cities, all of those groups have been doing a fantastic job with providing information to cities as we prepare for our comprehensive plan update. There's been just a lot of changes at the state level that's impacting this comprehensive plan update. And so we will, as we start building out the comprehensive plan website, we will include links to those resources. And if anyone is interested in webinars put on by any of those groups, we, we've been attending them, so we can always provide that information to the commission and also to the public if they are interested, so.
And I would, I would suggest as part of this process, take a minute to go to the website for like the PSRC and the, even the Department of Commerce, kind of. And then the King County Council, the Land Use Council, whatever the name of the King County version of that is. It's actually kind of informative to see like meeting. It's actually kind of informative to see like meeting minutes from their meetings and understand a little bit about who the members of those groups are and, and what they do and how they function. Cause to some extent, the plan that we develop is for the city, but the audience is some of those folks. And it's, I think, informative to understand that part of it. Okay. One last thing. Anybody got any questions or comments? All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next, we have our gender related public comment. Do we have anyone for public comments on this topic, the comp plan or on Kelly's report, director's report?
And I have two hands raised. We'll start with Ms. Victor.
Hi, Mary Victor here. I've lived in Sammamish 20 years. I don't know if we have to say our address, but it's 408 208 Avenue Northeast in Sammamish. Thanks for all the questions and information. It's really good discussion. First of all, thank you to Deputy Director Kelly Hillday for saying that the, the vision will be out there and people will be able to see it. I also remember from David Pyle, I believe that the city for budgeting, because it's a required thing to do, I think that, that both the comp plan and the critical areas, there's supposed to be some amount of money that's given by the state or whatever, so you can do that project. Cause they know if they require you to do it, that it's going to take some amount of money. So I haven't heard that brought up, but I believe that's one thing. And then also the annual doc process was mentioned there. You can submit a doc at any time of year. I'm sort of a frequent flyer for text amendments. And you don't have to just change the comp plan. You can change the comp plan or development regulations. So if there's one line of code that you feel like needs to be changed and you'd like it to be different, you can do that and that's open to anybody. But you do have to make that August 1st cutoff. Do it at least the day before, because there's some forms to fill out. And then if you move on, then there'll be more forms and SKEPA and stuff. But they don't, they can be non-project. They can just be a single line of code or even just a word. And on, so for all the things that Ms. Ellen talked about, I had written a list and she covered almost all of them. Students, seniors, I think one group, any, everybody hasn't said is the workers. There are people that like work at the grocery stores or work at the water and sewer district or work for the fire police or work as teachers or work somehow in the city. And they may or may not live in the city, but I don't know if they could be asked. Also, when you're collecting this statistics, there should be an optional thing on the survey for diversity. So you find out people's ages or whatever that they might share that's confidential, but just gets tallied up together. I think that's super important. I didn't realize Sammamish is having its 25th anniversary, 2024, but that's a good thing to tie it to. And then another thing, when consultant Jeff Ferrango was showing, I forget what slide number it is, but it was the slide where it had goals and policies and then background information. The colored pages on there were actually done by an artist, Anna McCray. I had met her through Mead Elementary School and I just happened to know her, but her name is on that. So I didn't know if somehow art could be put into the comprehensive plan. And maybe some history or photos or something or other. I just think that would add to the interest as well as the maps and graphics that are supposed to be done. And on all maps, they need to have a legend, they need to have a title, a date, and then where the data sources came from. Otherwise, it's really hard to use them. I do think it's great to have other city examples, case studies and organizations that give input. I was not part of that comp plan process in either 2003 or in 2012 to 2015, but I had understood that the 2012 ish one that got adopted in 2015, it kind of started from scratch, like brand new. It didn't start with the original one. And because of that, there was a lot of talking back and forth where people had to, you know, try to get things in for critical areas or make sure that steep slopes weren't forgotten, which is one of the reasons why you hear me, some, from me so much, because a lot of that, there was only two council members who were kind of pushing for that to get added back in. So if people are gonna get up to speed, if there are sections or if you can say, we're starting with this, but the whole thing could be replaced or it could be added to or is what's there is understandable, what could be cut, what could be added? I don't know how you get people to understand it, but I think that comments that Josh Amato had on making it useful to people and what are the outcomes and how does it affect them? I think that was very important. I also liked what Ms. Bosworth had said about the HOAs as being another group to tap, because we have a lot of those in the city with things that she talked about. And then that was mostly my notes from today. I do agree, Paul Stickney had spoke actually before the meeting on the non-agenda about getting the data. And I thought he gave some really great examples and analogies for, if you don't have the data, you really can't make the decisions, because we do need to look at land use and the alternatives. But to do that, we have to get the data for housing first. And we do have too many large, single family homes. We have housing stock that definitely lacks variety. We suffer from not only just having no affordable housing or very little, but the number and many types of what's called missing middle housing that are essential. We need to get those in to get an optimal balance and aid. That will aid not only addressing affordable housing in some manner, which usually needs subsidies, but also just housing affordability overall. And that's so crucial for residents, their lifestyles and their entire life cycle, like lifecycle housing. We should start thinking about that because our generation is getting older and statistically from ARP, there are numbers that show we are getting older. So I'm really glad that the seniors are going to be involved in this. I was glad to hear that there are going to be stakeholders or citizen advisory groups or focus groups. I think that's terrific. And I know the consultant, Mr. Jeff Ferrango had done an excellent job with that with development reg space too. And I'm glad to see the number and variety of consultants that are being added into this project. I didn't really have anything else. It's just super important to know that the comp plan is the guiding light for things. If it doesn't exist in the comp plan, it's hard to ever get it done. And if it is in the comp plan, you need to have the goals and policies that support it in the way that we are now. Like we have a lot of septics that we haven't dealt with. And there's some stuff on that and education, but it's not strong enough and we need to go forward with those. So you kind of have to look at like all the stuff that's going on and there's pretty gargantuan stuff going on these next two years. And those have to get folded into the comp plan without missing them and then try to have the goals and policies, which I'm a real detail person and sometimes it's harder for me to get up to that goals and policies. But that's super critical because that's what leads us on and allows changes and allows things to get implemented. So I won't use my whole time, actually use my timer again, but thank you for the meeting and the opportunity to do this. And it's super important work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Victor. And we have one more hand up. Paul, I'm gonna go ahead and promote you to panelist.
Hello, planning commissioners, staff and consultants. Very good presentation tonight. Lots of material, thoughtful questions from planning commissioners. And appreciate the opportunity to hear all of this this evening. The, you know, direction and Mary, appreciate your comments as well. The overall direction that our community takes is the 800 pound gorilla in the room. There are many different opinions on which way to go in our community. And there's been angst and there's been division. Somehow, and I have a, a suggestion, we need to alter that to inspirational and aspirational cohesiveness. And that's done with information. If you think about it in the past, far more of our direction on growth has been based on emotion and ideology. But what's been absent is the other IE, information and emotions based on the, on that information. Both are important. The, you know, passion people have for what Sammamish is and character is important. But so is information on what housing needs are and what consequences are from land use decisions, because consequences affect almost everything. So which plan is best? You know, King County had, and I'm gonna talk specific numbers. King County from 1980 to 1999, including project pipeline at the time of incorporation, added 16,000 houses or so to our community. That is a heck of a lot of growth. Our community has enabled roughly 3,500 homes, a little over 3,000 a single family and 4,500 as multifamily. But neither King County nor Sammamish has studied, what is it that the people that live and work here need over their lives to have housing that is balanced and sustainable and affordable over time and can create holistic enrichments? I think there's a way to bring our community together by contrasting what happened for the first 17, 18 years under minimized and mitigate, which was formal council policy from 1999 through 2017. Actions taken by councils from 2018 to 2020 did not support that. They further reduced single family homes, which I support from a balanced perspective. But they've also been minimizing different and diverse housing or trying to. And I don't support that before getting all the information. Optimal housing, as you know, is what I'm advocating. Commissioner Amato mentioned a darn important point about bite sized chunks. I want to read into the record some, if not all, of some consequence topics that I've turned into. That the three different approaches to land use, minimizing growth, very little growth or optimal growth, and there could be other options, are radically different in these topics. And what's the holistic, when you evaluate all these things, how do you feel about that and which is the best way forward? Here are some of them. How much we pay in local taxes? One-time revenues to the city? Diverse optimal housing choices for life? Water quality, wildlife and fish habitat? Community desires such as the Emerald Necklace? Urban forest management and natural beauty? Methods to lower car use and car trips? Cohesive inspirational and unifying vision? School district enrollment? What approximate costs for road projects to meet our level of service? Climate change, fire suppression plans? Green infrastructure and built environment? Road needs relative to desired land uses? Proper massing that can yield effective transit? Peaceful, safe, enjoyable neighborhoods? Local conveniences and services based on the land uses that we choose? Lower living costs and be able to stay in Sammamish. I hear that over the last 20 years. It's huge. Conservation, stewardship and sustainability? All encompassing community character, how it all works together and synergizes and adds to each other, rather than tearing our community apart? Enduring strength and resiliency as a city? Recurring revenues to a city, significant differences here. Stormwater impacts and retrofit? Streams, wetland, riparian corridors? Police and fire, level of service? Multipurpose civic facility, senior center? Array of environmental ramifications to climate change, carbon footprint and stewardship? Growth that is net positive? Walkability, connection, trails? Parks, open space, athletic fields, arts? City income versus general and capital cost? Appropriate equity, equality, inclusion and, you know, diversity? Accessibility, ADA? Adaptive designs? Civic in, infrastructure, repair or and or replace over time, like a condo association? Holistic renewable enrichments? Arts, human services? Historic? Emergency and disaster management? Managing our carbon footprint, greenhouse gas? Vibrant, fun, heart of a city? Livability, lifestyle legacies and preserving neighborhood values? I'm sure there's more. But what I believe has been missing and the only way to make this really work for our community is to really compare the IE of the current comp plan of minimized growth of what the last four to five years of council wanted to do, which is to have much less than that and optimal growth based on housing needs and wants over a cycle of life? Which of those approaches turns the most of these topics in the most positive direction for our community? And let's get consensus on that direction forward. And instead of being at odds with each other, let's move forward with collaboration and discussion. And let's bring together EI of the past, emotions and ideology with IE of the future, information and a new set of emotions. Appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. And we have no more hands up.
All right. Thanks for that. The last thing is maybe you should just talk about the calendar for a quick second. So as a reminder to everybody, the planning commission takes a break in August every year that I've been participating. And so there'll be no meetings in August and we will resume with meetings in September. And actually Kelly talked a little bit about what's going on in September. So make sure to keep track of that on your calendars that will resume in September. Anything else from staff for this evening? All right. Let me just say that I would encourage everybody to get out and enjoy the weather. And I think we might have a chance to see the northern lights, so I'd encourage you to do that. And, and after that, go back in and in honor of my, my hiccup at the beginning of the meeting and Commissioner Jerry Norman, go inside and watch a Jerry O'Connell movie. Can somebody move to adjourn, please?
So moved.
It's been moved in second that we adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. No? Thank you, everyone. See you in September. Have a great evening. We're adjourned.